Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the West Sacramento City Council. As always, we'll begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask all our guests to please rise, and tonight I'll ask Councilmember Kristoff to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to which it stands on the nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much. Before we get started on tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind all our guests to please turn off their cell phones, electronic devices, so as not to interrupt the rest of the tonight's meeting and debate and discussion. Anyone who wishes to address the council tonight can pick up a yellow card off the side dais, fill it out, and please bring it to our clerk. We'd like to get those in before the end of the staff period, I'm sorry, the staff presentation, and so I could have those and call on those folks who wish to speak. We do have a timer on the clock, a timer for everyone speaking of three minutes. We ask you, for fairness, to make sure everybody does have an opportunity to speak, to please keep your comments within a three-minute timeframe, and we ask while those folks are speaking, because some people are, public speaking can be intimidating, and we just ask you to please respect their time and not to have any form of applause or other type of noise during their time. So before we start into our formal agenda, I'd like our council to please join me in welcoming. We're honored to have some students here today who I was lucky enough to visit with, as well as some of our city staff from, some students from Kumamoto University. They're all sitting in our audience tonight. We welcome you to West Sacramento and thank you for joining us today. I'd like to acknowledge David Boer, is, where's David? There he is, thank you. Thank you for bringing your, the students to our city, and I hope they got something out of our time with them today and learned something about our city. I also like to acknowledge Professor Ito, is he in? There he is, hello Professor Ito, as well as Oita City Councilmember Yoshinora, is that right? Okay, I'm sorry, I can't, there he is. So, welcome, sir. I couldn't pronounce your last name, I'm sorry. But I welcome you to our chambers and appreciate you being here with us as well. I also like to acknowledge Satoshi Yoshida for being here as well. Thank you for translating for us earlier today. You did a terrific job. I think your jokes were better when you said them than when I said them. So, thank you and welcome all of you to our city council meeting. We begin tonight as we always do, item 1A on presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. We have quite a few requests to speak, so we'll begin with Jaya, I think, Jaya Patel? Is that right? And again, next will be Rick Gonzalez, and as a reminder, we are, have these for three minutes, so I'll remind you at that time to please type your comments. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jaya Patel.
Would you stand, I'm sorry to interrupt.
My name is Jaya Patel, and I'm from El Tejon and Pickwick Motel down the street on West Capitol, and Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and audience. The item's not in the agenda, but I'd just like to bring it to your attention that we are having so much problem around our properties with bad peoples breaking in, littering, throwing garbages. There is also a city-owned property right next to Pickwick Motel, which should be taken care of, has been neglected by the city, so I hope that you could do something about it, so we would have a better environment around our property to live.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Rick Gonzalez, and following Mr. Gonzalez is Bill Lowell. I should also state that state law requires us to have these moments of public discourse, but we cannot act or comment or discuss the items because they have not been agendized. So, but we will take your input, and somebody from city staff or other will follow up if necessary.
Good evening, West Sacramento City Council. My name is Rick Gonzalez. I'm the president of the Mexican American Consilio of Yolo County. I wanted to invite this, the city council personally, and, oh, I forgot.
Let's report these now.
I just want to, I passed out a flyer. If you look at the first side, it's, "Huein is Saturday, October 19th, the 29th Annual Consilio Recognition Dinner Dance and Scholarship Fundraiser. The place is Wait Hall at the Yolo County Fairgrounds in Woodland. The dinner is at 5:30, awards at 7:00 PM, and then the raffle and dance at 9:00 PM." If you'll turn it over, you'll see the people that we are honoring. We're honoring the seven comprehensive high schools in Yolo County, two students from each of those schools, a male and a female, who have, were selected by their school based on their GPAs as well as their school and community involvement. So we're going to honor those 14 students. They'll be our first 14 scholarship winners for the year 2014. If you look down, you'll see there's nine adults that we're also honoring. I want to highlight the ones from West Sacramento. The Pilat Andrade Award will be awarded to Norma Alcala from West Sacramento. She's, someone's been quite involved in her community, I'm sure you all know her. She's quite involved also in going up and down the state, doing workshops on voter registration, and so she'll be receiving the Pilat Andrade Award. And the Rick Gonzalez Senior Award, named after my father, the top award, is Carlos Alcala, who's also from West Sacramento, and he's a lawyer who has been instrumental in the, in the movement with, he worked with Cesar Chavez way back when, and he's still doing, doing his thing. He's the state chair of the Hispanic Caucus, or the Latino Caucus for the Democratic Party statewide. So, those two individuals, they're residents of West Sacramento, and they are going to be honored. Our scholarship program started in 2000, or we give more scholarships to anybody else in Yolo County. This year, we've totaled, as of this year, 630 scholarships have been awarded. We've been awarding scholarships at River City High School since 2000. We do five per year, so 60, about 70-plus scholarships have been awarded to River City High School alone. Yolo High School has also, on our, one of our schools, we service 14 schools, and in West Sacramento, it's River City and Yolo High School. Our goal is to honor, is to give 55 scholarships this year. Here's our real good-looking program that we have that goes with it, all in color, and it's very nice. I see my time is up, so I will, I will end with that and invite everyone to come. We get about 400 people attend. We honor students, and the highlight is the students, because the students are our future, just like you're honoring these students from Japan. We believe that that's our future, so they're the highlights of the whole evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Rick.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Rick, for coming out this evening. I know you've been doing this work for quite some time. I've been fortunate enough to attend many of your events, and I've seen many of the River City kids that have benefited from the work that you do, and so I don't know if I'm available that night, but regardless, I'm going to certainly make a contribution, because I think the work that you do and the support that you give to our kids is tremendous. So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for the invitation in person as well, so appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record, and I just want to remind the folks that on the 10th, week from tomorrow, in Woodland, at the Yolo Bus Office, at 6 o'clock, there's going to be a SACOG Unmet Public Transit Needs there at the Yolo Bus Office in Woodland. And one of those needs, I think, is like an every-other-hour service to and from our industrial area, especially since we now have our Chamber of Commerce located over in that direction near where our city council meetings used to be held. And I also wanted to note, I got a response, I took pictures and showed a progress report of the wheelchair ramp I now have on the front of my house, and I'm having new stairs put in and so forth, and I sent a copy of it to Senator Steinberg's office, and he sent me this letter regarding my, my request for more new homes to be built with the universal design, so that when, as people age or become disabled, well, then their homes will be prepared for anybody that needs a wheelchair and so forth. My guess is that probably wouldn't cost more than a couple of grand extra for each new house, and that's far less than what it's costing me, and I'm just paying for the material for the work that's being done on my place. So I think it's a very cost-effective thing, and I'm, I'm in touch with my friends over Resources for Independent Living, and they're going to have somebody else draft some specific language legislative proposal and relate to the code section, which should be added, changed, or removed, and so, like I say, we'll be, we'll be talking to our Assemblyman's office in that regard also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. We have no other requests to speak, except on item 1A, so we'll move on to item 1B, Council Communications Assignments. Before we get into any, any commission assignments, I do need to report out on closed session. So, if the city attorney wouldn't mind reporting it out for us.
Thank you, yes, the council did meet in closed session to consider, I lost my page here, there we are, sorry. Met in closed session to discuss real property with the city's negotiators, no action was taken on that, that concerned the stone lock properties. Also met in closed session concerning initiation of litigation, no action was taken, and a conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation, that's the case of City of West Sacramento versus Department of Finance, and no action was taken.
Thank you very much. For the benefit of our visitors from, from Japan, our closed session is an item we're granted under state law when we are in, we are facing exposure to litigation or other actions, we are allowed to meet in closed session to discuss that with our city attorney. So that's why we have that one section aside, and we're back here in open session, which is open to the public. So, moving on to any council communications or other board reports, anybody have anything to report? Mr. Kristoff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. One was Sac Regional, that went to Sac Regional meeting on September 25th, and really, that was sort of mundane, really not a lot of important issues to report on. But one other, on September 26th, went to Lafco, and one of the things that we have done at Lafco is we have received a governance study for animal control, and what we are doing is forwarding that study on to the city managers groups. And so the city managers now are going to sort out some of the issues that go along with animal services and each jurisdiction's approach to the animal service issues, and so just to give a heads up to our city manager that we will be sending that on to you and Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Any other reports? Seeing none, move on to item C, which is council appointments, reappointments, or removals from city, or non-city boards and commissions. We have none at this time, I don't think, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to consent agenda. I'm sorry, there is a note on 1C for the Agriculture and Natural Resources Commission on the agenda. Chris, are we taking action on that tonight?
It's just there in the event that you were going to take an action.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we're taking that tonight. Okay, so we'll move on. There is no action on that, so on to the consent agenda, are there any items? We have 2 through 7 on the consent agenda, consent agenda, anyone need anything off?
I'd move it.
So we have a motion to move, and a second for Mr. Drew Hanneson, all those in favor say aye. Yes?
There is a memo before you concerning item 4. I would ask that your motion include the revisions discussed in that memo.
Well, stone lock.
Oh, okay, thank you. Item 4 is, is the stone lock, so I'll ask Mr. Viegas to please amend.
Yep, so, so move.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, including the amendment to item 4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda items passed. Moving on to item 8, which is Community Development, Development Engineering, Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution 1367.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. This item seeks your approval of the abandonment of that portion of West Capitol Avenue, which is located between 3rd and 5th Streets. This abandonment is consistent with redevelopment contemplated within the city's general plan and the Washington-specific plan. Also consistent with these plans, historical route, State Route 275 has been realigned and reconstructed as Carbridge Gateway. This new roadway configuration has rendered the existing alignment of this portion of West Capitol Avenue unnecessary from a public circulation perspective and unusable due to the new intersection configurations at 3rd and 5th Street. Currently PG&E and Verizon Wireless have improvements located within the section of West Capitol Avenue. Abandonment of the right-of-way and proposed plans for redevelopment of the underlying property, which has obtained design review approval from the council, will require the relocation of these facilities. Both companies have been notified of the city's intent to vacate. The city is working closely with PG&E on their relocation plans. Verizon has requested that the city retain a permanent public utility easement. Multiple attempts by staff to discuss the matter with Verizon Wireless have been successful to date. This item remains, retains a temporary public utility easement for a period of one year in order to facilitate the relocation of these improvements, and makes findings of public convenience and necessity which require the relocation of all public facilities. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, staff? Seeing none? Go ahead and move to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and as we're considering resolutions, I'll open up the public hearing. I have no request to speak on item 8, but if anybody is, would like to speak on it? Seeing none? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any debate or motions.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would move that we adopt Resolution 1367, vacating that portion of West Capitol Avenue located between 3rd and 5th Street, and retain a temporary public utility easement in its place, which shall expire on October 2nd, 2014.
We have a motion by Mr. Kristoff, second by Mr. Viegas, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, which is consideration of successor agency Resolution 1392, authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to the redevelopment agency. There you are.
Yeah, the item you're looking at tonight is another in our effort to refinance debt where we could achieve savings. In this case, the debt we would be refinancing are bonds that were issued by the former West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency. And as we presented to you back in June, we're going to be looking at, you know, two series of bonds that were issued in 1998 and 2004, though since that time, there have been shifts in the market with increases in rates, which have us looking at a couple of scenarios that we've outlined in your report. Primarily, the kind of strategy would be a partial refunding, rather than taking out, let's say, the entire series of 1998 bonds outstanding. We would be looking at a partial refunding where, you know, those, refinanced bonds would achieve 3% or greater savings. So, this isn't unlike what we did with the water bonds in 2011 and last year, where we did a partial refunding of some of the bonds that made financial sense, and we came back later when, when the rest of them were in the money, as we say. So, you know, the refinancing has been going on in an environment where we've got Department of Finance reviewing what we're doing, and so with the Oversight Board approvals, we did have to send the Oversight Board resolution to Department of Finance. They took their full 65-day review period before they sent back a letter that said they're okay with us moving forward, but we would have to bring the final terms to the DOF for their review. So what you are being asked to approve tonight is, is a deal that will look at less than the total outstanding bonds that are out there on those, those two issues I talked about, but will achieve savings north of 4%. So, our minimum is 3% of net present value of the refunded bonds, and, you know, what's good is the market has come back in the last month or so, and so now we're looking at savings, like I said, you know, a little north of 4%. Now, we're talking about two different ways that we would refund the bonds, and again, this gets back to two approaches we've taken in our past refinancing, and you'll be familiar with them. One of which is where we do a public offering, where we, we go to the market with the bonds, and it's subject to some uncertainty about what's happening in the market at the time. And then the other approach is where we do a private placement with, with a bank lender, and we've been very successful in doing these private placements. So, in the action you're taking tonight, we, we want to have the latitude to allow us to take either approach. Again, our goal here is to get our savings as high as we can, and, and the finance team that's been working on this, and we've got Mike Kavanaugh from Southwest Securities in the audience, as well as Ken Decker, who's the city's financial advisor, they're, they're really looking at creative approaches to maximizing our savings. Now, following the action tonight, we would, we would be looking at going to the Oversight Board on October 10th, and then that action would be subject to, again, Department of Finance review, but we'd be hoping to, to either go to the market or complete our, our private placement by the end of the year. Again, a lot of our timing has to do with Department of Finance. And as usual, our, our refinancing will not extend the term of the bonds, so again, we're, we're looking at savings that will accrue to the taxing entities that get the distribution of what used to be taxing increment, you know, upon the dissolution of redevelopment. So, with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Kristoff has a question.
Oh, yeah, I do, Paul. In light of the craziness that's going on at a national level right now, are there going to be opportunities to refinance these bonds, to sell them, and to do some things with them?
Well, I asked the same question of Mike Kavanaugh. I could let him answer. If you want the short version, it's that the bigger concern right now is the potential default that's looming, not so much the shutdown right now, and I guess in the last couple days, the markets haven't reacted poorly to that, but it's, it's the looming crisis towards the end of the month that we're concerned about.
Right, right, right. Okay. And undoubtedly, this will not have transpired before then, so you may have to put the brakes on it?
Yeah, it's, it's at risk, but I would remind the successor agency that we did, in our resolution that went to Department of Finance, get their authorization to put costs of issuance that aren't contingent on the ROPS to be paid from future distributions from the county. So while some of the costs here are going, are being incurred, we're going to be able to put those on the ROPS, and then again, there are other costs that are just contingent on it being completed. And of course, you know, as we've said the last couple times we've come to you with these refinancings, the, the dynamic nature of the market right now means that we don't know what's going to happen, but we're proceeding that way.
No, I understand, yeah. Now, if we do have a savings, is Department of Finance going to mandate that that savings be split between the seven entities that are within the successor agency picture?
The, the distribution of proceeds are in, in law right now, so DOF doesn't have the discretion to change the distribution, so it would come, every, every six months, there is a distribution of the leftover tax increment that isn't used for enforceable obligations, and there are formulas that are prescribed for the distribution to taxing entities, and that won't change. So, right now, our, our distributions have been 50.4%, so roughly half of the savings would accrue to the city.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Just a quick question, Paul. So the, the $300,000 including the underwriter discount, is that normal, or is that based upon how much? How is that calculated? Because that seems like a lot, but maybe it's not.
I think it's, the discount's .75 or 75 basis points. That is within the proposal that was submitted to us by Southwest Securities, so it's, it's their going rate, and it was in the proposal that we accepted when we added them to our underwriter pool.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I don't have any questions, and I think I would say that, as you said, this continues to work. Your team has already begun and, and done a great job of taking advantage of the opportunities while they're here, but as Mr. Kristoff reminded us, those, there may be things that may be shifting in that market. They were shifting anyway, interest rates were beginning to creep up, and they've actually come back a little bit in the last month or so, but as long as we have the opportunity to increase our position, I think that's a great action to take, so. And, you know, it's always, thanks for caring for the fact that we don't want to extend the term, so we achieved that as well. So, thank you. Any other questions? Is this a public hearing? I can, I don't think we need to take public comment for this, so we'll go ahead and move forward if there's any more questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
I would move the recommended action.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Item 10, item 9 passes. Moving on to item 10, which is Presentation and Discussion of Ordinance 13-5 and Ordinance 13-6 Regarding Various Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance, or Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code, and this is Sandra.
Good evening, Protem, Mayor Protem Lidesma, and members of the city council. The purpose of this workshop is to introduce proposed changes to the zoning ordinance and get the council's feedback on these changes. The suite of changes include minor amendments to the existing sections of the zoning ordinance, minor revisions to existing definitions, new definitions, minor changes to the land use zoning matrix, as well as significant amendments. Since there are a number of changes that the council is being asked to consider, I will just provide an overview of the most significant proposals, which include front yard paving restrictions for single-family homes, changes to the temporary onsite science standards, new science standards for temporary offsite directional signs for agriculturally-related activities, fencing standards for barbed wire and electric fences, and new operating standards for temporary seasonal sales activities. Beginning with front yard paving, in March of this year, the Planning Commission ratified a zoning administrator's interpretation that the collective provisions in the Southport Design Guidelines, the Landscape Development Guidelines, and the Municipal Code prohibit paving over the entire front yard area. Since the intent of these provisions is not explicitly articulated in the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission also directed staff to prepare amendments to this effect. This issue came about as a result of complaints received from the Code Enforcement Division involving two properties in Southport. In these instances, the front yard landscape areas had been either significantly reduced or completely eliminated. We're finding that builders in Southport have maximized the building envelope and have built large homes on small lots, creating small front yard landscape areas where the driveway encompasses approximately 40% of the front yard area. Many of the cities in the region include provisions in their municipal code restricting the amount of paving in front yards. The City of El Goro requires that at a minimum 40% of the front yard area be a pervious surface. The City of Rancho Cordoba allows a maximum of 40% of the front yard to be an impervious surface for parking purposes, and no more than 50% of the front yard can be an impervious surface for parking and all other uses of paving, like walkways and outdoor, small outdoor, small outdoor patio areas. The City of Sacramento allows a maximum of 40% of the required front yard setback to be paved for parking and driveways. The proposed language recommended by the Plan- to be paved for parking and driveways. The proposed language recommended by the Planning Commission allows up to 50% of the entire front yard area to be paved. The 50% threshold is being recommended to allow room for some improvement since the driveways for many small lots in Southport already encompass close to 40% of the front yard. The second most significant change involves signage. The zoning ordinance allows temporary advertising signs four times per year. The ordinance does not regulate the size of the signs, the number of temporary signs that are allowed, or the location of the signs. Business owners can display any number of banners and pennants, inflated signs, and vertical flags on the business site. These signs have been displayed in landscaped areas, parking lots, public sidewalks, on light poles and fences, and in some instances, they have been used as permanent signage. The proposed changes would regulate the type of temporary signs that would be allowed, the number of temporary signs that would be allowed, and the location of the temporary signs. The proposed changes would only allow banner signs to be used as temporary advertising signs. This means that pennants, inflated signs, vertical flags, and any other type of temporary signage would no longer be allowed. And secondly, the proposed changes would allow two banner signs per business, and lastly, the banner signs must be attached to the building. The signs can still be displayed four times per year, but keep in mind that these changes would not affect permanent signage. What is being proposed is consistent with other regions in the cities as shown in the table attached to the staff report. The proposed changes would facilitate two objectives. It would help to improve the appearance of the city's neighborhoods and continue to provide an avenue for businesses to advertise and market their products and services. And I will just show you a short PowerPoint of what, some of the issues we've come across. This is an example of a number of banner signs being used for one business. This PowerPoint shows a vertical, this inflated sign, and these are considered vertical flags. And then you'll see, I believe that might be a banner sign. And this vertical flag is not, under the sign ordinance, it is allowed, but it's, but you can't have it on the sidewalk. So that would not be allowed. This is another example of a vertical flag. You see this is an A-frame sign, which is allowed by the sign ordinance. The only problem with this A-frame sign is that it's on the sidewalk, which is a public right-of-way. And you see that a vacuum cleaner is being used as signage as well for advertising purposes. This is another view of that same, this vertical sign I just showed you previously, and you see a number of A-frame signs in the public right-of-way. And then these are two or three vacuum cleaners being used as signage as well. This is a banner sign which is attached to the building wall. This is a sign posted on a tree, example of a sign, temporary sign being supported by tires. And then you have a couple of banner signs attached to the fence. And then down the street, you'll see this vertical, this balloon sign, and you'll see an A-frame sign in the city's right-of-way. And then you see pennants, which are attached from the building to this A-frame sign. And I have a better view of this. This is an example of pennants. These are, we're proposing to eliminate pennants. And another sign of showing inflatable signs, we're proposing to eliminate these types of signage. And banner signs, this is an example of banner sign, we're proposing to allow banner signs only. And you'll see a banner sign here and a banner sign on the other side of the building here. So I just want to give you sort of a visual of--
Can you go back a couple, I think I saw Chris Ledesma campaign sign that was illegally placed on one of those, I'm kidding, Sandra.
Okay. Okay. The second change involving signage is related to allowing directional signs for agriculturally-related activities that we typically see each year, especially during the holiday season, and which are currently illegal under the current code. The Planning Commission adopted language that would allow offsite directional signs to direct the public to seasonally base agricultural activities where products are available for sale, such as farms, ranches, pumpkin packages, and Christmas tree farms. The signs would be subject to a sign permit, and since these are offsite signs, the sign owner would be required to obtain written permission from property owners to install the signs on properties owned by others. The signed regulations for temporary agricultural directional signs will be similar to the signed regulations that we have in the zoning code for temporary offsite directional signs for real estate. The signs must be spaced 500 feet apart on major roads, and they will be limited to four square feet in area and four square feet in height. The next category of changes, significant changes, involves fencing. From time to time, staff receives inquiries regarding the use of barbed wire fencing, and we have also been approached by Electric Guard Dog, a private electric fence contractor regarding the use of electric fencing. The use of either types of fencing is not explicitly prohibited in the zoning ordinance, and based on the review of the fencing standards for cities in the region, barbed wire fencing and electric fences are either prohibited, or they are allowed under certain conditions and some exceptions. At the August 15 Planning Commission hearing, public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended that barbed wire fencing be allowed in the rural zones and allowed in the industrial zones for security purposes. And after the Planning Commission public hearing, staff included additional language to the proposed zone text. The fire department requested that public safety facilities be exempt. That would include the fire stations and also police facilities. And in addition, planning staff added language recommending that city facilities that need secure fencing be exempt as well, such as the city's corporation yard, the water treatment plant, sewer lift facilities, and other similar type facilities. The use of electric fences is supported by the chamber. EDAC expressed concern that these types of fences promote a negative image of the city. However, the Planning Commission adopted language that would allow electric fences in the rural zones for animal control. They would also be allowed in the industrial zones and also allowed in the business park zones, subject to a conditional use permit. The building official is crafting fencing specifications for both types of fencing that will be covered in a separate, a separate section, another different section of the municipal code, which is anticipated to be considered by the council later this year. The next and last significant change involves new operating standards for temporary seasonal sales. This would be roadside stands for seasonal fruits and vegetables, Christmas tree lots, flower sales for Valentine's Day and Mother's Day, as an example. This would not include roadside stands for ranches and farms, which are already permitted in the zoning ordinance. Seasonal sales are currently allowed, subject to an approved business license, and an itinerary vendor permit, which requires a criminal background check. Currently, they are only allowed on a site for four days within a 30-day period, and beyond that, the temporary sales evolves into a permanent land use, subject to a conditional use permit. For short-term operations that typically last less than 30 days, a conditional permit is costly. The proposed zone text recommends specific operating standards that would allow seasonal sales to operate on a temporary basis without a conditional use permit. The proposed amendment does not affect seasonal sales affiliated with onsite commercial establishments, such as Lowe's or Home Depot, as these are considered accessory to the principal use. So if Lowe's wants to operate or, you know, sell Christmas trees during the Christmas season, they're already, we're not regulating those types of uses. They're accessory to the principal use. This would only affect the standalone operations in the commercial zones and would not affect fireworks stands, since they are already regulated in the municipal code. Seasonal sales would continue to be subject to a conditional use permit and an itinerary vendor permit process. They would be allowed up to 30 days. The same lot cannot be used more than two times within the calendar year, because we want to ensure that they're not going to be a permanent use or involve into a permanent use. And they cannot create a nuisance. Otherwise, there is language in the proposed amendment that would allow the city to go in and shut down the operation if there are some nuisance problems. We have gone to the chamber twice to talk about the proposed zone amendments, more specifically, the electric fencing proposed amendments, and we've gone to EDAC as well. This is a public workshop. The public hearing is scheduled for October 16, 2013, and David Tilly and myself are available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Sandra. Any questions for staff?
Yes, yes. Thank you. So I know you've done an amazing amount of work. You're trying to strike a balance with what I think has been in the works for about 10, well, over 10 years now, in terms of our sign ordinance. Have you done much outreach to business owners? I know the chamber has committees and subcommittees that can probably weigh in on these issues in terms, partly because of their membership, has experience with some of the sign issues. But have you actually talked to some of the businesses that have had problems in the past to not only get input from them, but to make sure that they understand kind of where this is headed? Because most small businesses don't probably spend a whole lot of time setting aside funds for their marketing and their advertising, yet that's such a critical part of their operation, their existence. And I just--
We discussed this with the chamber. We talked with their Government Affairs Committee, and that was the outreach, and also EDAC as well. We have not talked with, you know, made an outreach to small business owners.
So you have done some outreach to small business owners?
No, we have not.
Have not. Well, I got to tell you, I mean, I understand the Government Affairs Committee of the chamber is probably a pretty good cross-representation of small businesses, but by the mere fact that they're a part of the chamber, they're probably on one end of the spectrum in terms of folks that are in the know, in terms of what we're trying to do. And I got to tell you, it just seems like the biggest, I say the problems, the biggest complaints we get, or the biggest issues, the largest amount of staff time, your time that is spent trying to enforce the sign ordinances, probably don't come from folks that are part of the chamber. And I don't know how to reconcile that. I just want to make sure that we're reaching out to the folks at the ground level that are trying to make ends meet with small businesses, and how to market their business during that temporary period where they're using a banner, or they're using temporary business advertising signs. And I know you've got here, you've identified limited durations, which isn't real clear in terms of how much time you're talking about when you can use a banner for temporary usage. I just want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can, because once this is in code, it doesn't leave us a lot of discretion up here, and it certainly doesn't give you and staff a lot of discretion. It's, once it's sort of in print and been approved, we're kind of stuck with it. And I just want to make sure that people understand what it is we're doing. And I don't know how much more energy and resources we can expend knocking on doors and making sure that folks understand, but I think it certainly would seem to me that it's worth reaching out to folks to make sure they understand what is going to affect their bottom line. And as I said, I know for a fact, a lot of small businesses, that mom-and-pop operator doesn't have any money for marketing and outreach, and signage is just a critical lifeline for their existence. And I just want to make sure we're spending the necessary time, the appropriate amount of time, getting their input or educating them about what it is we're about to do.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Sandra, on the residential parking, so basically, whatever the surface has, at the residence has to be permeable. So that includes gravel.
What we are proposing is that no more than 50% of the front yard area be paved.
Right, but could someone gravel their entire front yard and park on it?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Could someone gravel their front yard and park on it?
Under the proposed code?
Right.
No. Well, no, because we're proposing that at least 50% be landscaped.
And gravel is not considered landscaping?
No.
Yes, and in any parking anywhere, would need to be on a durable and dustless surface under our current code, and gravel would not be considered durable and dustless, because it's not generally considered to be an all-weather surface. So any parking in the front yard would need to be, or anywhere onsite, would need to be on a durable and dustless surface.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just, I wasn't real clear whether or not that would prevent that or not, because I know a lot of folks are doing some zero-scaping, and there's very little vegetation, but using rock a lot, just a cut-down of water use. We don't want to restrict that if we, under this ordinance. But thanks.
Thank you.
Sandra, one quick question, and that was with the business license on seasonal activity sales and that sort of thing. Is there a hybrid business license that people can get if they sell fruits or whatever it is? Because, I mean, that's seasonal.
When you say hybrid, what do you--
A hybrid business license. You know, instead of paying $20 for a business license, you pay $10 for the business license, because it's seasonal for a very short period of time.
No, no.
There is not.
There is not. There's one fee.
Okay.
There's one fee.
Thank you.
I guess my only comment kind of piggybacks on Mr. Vegas brought up, was just around the education of the ordinance. Because I think that, and the chamber probably wouldn't disagree with the fact that the last time we went through a big sign change, there were many small businesses that didn't pay attention, didn't quite understand what the changes were. And I think we even still have disagreements with some over that. And so I think it is important, as much as possible, to make sure that we're clear with them on educating what we're about to do and why we're doing it. I mean, it's unfortunate, maybe, that some businesses or entrepreneurs, mom-and-pop businesses, whatever, take advantage of their corner and overindulge, and it kind of ruins it for those who are trying to do the right thing and promote their business. But I think we just need to be fair with them and make sure they understand what we're trying to do. And it's less about, I think, if there's input we can get that helps make the ordinance better and easier to implement, then so be it. But I'm just, you know, I'm kind of in favor of kind of managing it down a little bit. I think it's, your photos exemplify things that I've seen, too. And it's just, I think we just need to make sure we're clear, the direction we want to go with this. So, but we do need to educate on what we want to do, so there's no surprises in a few months when this goes into effect.
Okay. This is--
One more.
Oh, Mr. Kristoff.
One more comment. I agree with what Mayor Protem Ledesma was talking about, because it seems like the small business person, the typical small business person, they will have an inflatable, whatever it is, and this and that, and it will just take planning, or it'll take nuisance abatement, or somebody to catch it, and then they bring it down. Well, it's, you know, that's a little bit late, but at the same time, they seem to be pretty cooperative, with the exception of a couple of our big boys around town. But other than that, I mean, I think that the more we can do as far as educate those folks, so they really don't spend that $100 that Oscar's talking about, and, or they do spend it in a way that is a monument sign, or some other kind of sign that actually does them some good without having it taken down. And then the other issue was the electric fencing and things. I think you found a very good balance, and I feel pretty comfortable about the way you're handling that whole issue. I think you found a nice balance.
Okay. We do have a couple of requests to speak on this item. So first is Michael Pate.
Thank you. I'm Michael Pate. I'm with the Electric Guard Dog out of Columbia, South Carolina. We're the initiators of the electric fence ordinance. Basically, I'd like to thank the chamber for helping us with this. The chamber was very instrumental in getting us in front of the city staff, and initiating contact with them, and getting the actual ordinance written. I think it's a good ordinance. To me, it's not perfection, but whatever it is. The only thing I would bring up is the permitting protocol for electric fences. I'm a little concerned about a special protocol just for electric fences. I think we have everything spelled out, that we need spelled out right now, as far as the restrictions on the fences with height, electrification, the locations and the zones. And I'm quite frankly worried about an overly oppressive protocol that might be initiated. So I would appreciate just a straight, over-the-counter permit for a fence, for any electrified fence that's out there that meets the standards that are proposed here. fence that's out there that meets the standards that are proposed here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pate.
Thank you.
Next to speak is A.J. Tendak. There he is.
My name is A.J. Tendak. I'm a resident and a member of the city's Housing Advisory Commission, and I'm one of the owners of Bike Dog Brewing, which is here in town as well. Given this is a workshop, I'll be very brief and just say we're incredibly supportive of the update for the brewery and actually the addition of the winery, I think, is a fantastic addition. And I'll leave it at that and offer my insight if you have any questions. But it didn't sound like there was any coming up.
I thought you were going to say you were going to offer beer, but that's okay.
Very soon.
Thanks, A.J. All right. There's no other requests to speak on this item, so I'll bring it back to council for any final comments for staff. This is just the presentation workshop. So if there's any other feedback, yes, Mr. Vegas?
I'd like to follow up on the request about the over-the-counter permitting for the fencing. What would be different in the permitting process for this item versus any of the others that are being proposed this evening?
Well, what we're considering tonight is really where these types of fences, you know, could be used. The specifics of how a building permit would be issued and what criteria will be coming forward to you at your first meeting in November, is my understanding, is part of a larger building code update and amendments that our building official will be bringing to you. So I don't know if this would be a type of thing that would be an over-the-counter permit or not, but a building permit would be required for, you know, for any electric fence that would come in.
Fair enough. I guess I just, and that's fine, if at a later date, we'll be actually discussing the details of it. I guess I just would reiterate the idea that if, once we decide what it is we want, if it's spelled out to the extent that somebody can read it and understand it and know what it is they're getting into, it just makes it a lot easier to do business that way versus not knowing what to expect until you've applied and you've already kind of committed some resources and time, and then find out that the process or the protocol is very different than what you would have imagined, but there's no way to find out what that process is. And so you don't have to, I mean, expand beyond. I just, I would encourage that we lay out what it is, the expectations are going to be, and whatever that process that staff determines is what's going to be recommended. Does that make sense?
Yes. We'll relay that to our building official who's preparing that information as we speak.
So if I can, if I could temporarily, just in terms of the earlier comments about the idea of the small businesses being up to speed on kind of what it is we're doing, I don't intend, or I don't have any interest in slowing this down. I know that tonight is just in a workshop, so we're not adopting anything yet. But I would at least want to include, as we go forward, some outreach, some education, something that illustrates to small businesses what the expectations are. I have seen floated around, I don't know if we do this ordinarily, but some flyers that identify pictures and examples of what can and what can't happen for certain businesses that we know have a perpetual turnover in the operator of that small business location. There are certain corners that we know intuitively are going to have a new business there every year, every two years. And I think it would probably be good on our part, save ourselves money and time and energy, to educate them in advance rather than after the fact, because after the fact is, in my mind, is a bit late for some folks who, as I said, don't have, they don't plan into their budget, costs associated with not being able to market their product or their business. So I really think having very simply laid-out examples and pictures work really well for folks who want to understand what it is they can and cannot do. Once they've already leased the property and invariably the owner did not notify them that they have no capacity to market their business, and now they're sort of stuck. So I really think it's important that we take, you know, a more proactive approach in educating folks about what the new ordinances are, because we've spent 10 years rolling this out. And I think it's a good product, but it's not, it doesn't work for folks.
Yes, Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, maybe just to follow up, but there's a number of other jurisdictions that have done this, in terms of the regulation, the banners and the floaters and all that. Have you talked to any of these jurisdictions that have done this to see what their reaction was to these small businesses, to see if there was any, it might be something to do just to, you know, obviously, there's going to be people upset about it, because it is their only way to advertise, it's the cheapest way. But if there's been any way to maybe help those businesses in some other ways, of course, we could prohibit it, but, you know, the next step would be how, what they can do in the aftermath of this kind of ordinance. Maybe look at some of those cities that have done this before to see if there is, has been a post-ordinance outreach that we might be able to get some hints on, maybe how to help these folks.
I guess my only, Mr. Kristof, anything else?
Okay. Well, just a comment on addressing seasonal sales as well as signage for seasonal sales. Just, I guess, thanking you for addressing this and making it available, since this has become something the city has shown interest in and through our food hub culture that we're establishing here. So hopefully, this will kind of help folks that are wanting to sell their product. I guess the only question about it, because it does still require a business license and vendor permit to do so, and that's, is that limited only to residents or businesses already located here, or is that just open to anybody that wants to sell roadside?
Anybody that wants to sell these types of products in the city.
Okay. I don't have any other comments other than that. That's the one, that clarification. All right. So do you have enough direction? And I don't think there's any action we take. I just need to inform the public that the public hearing and the first reading of ordinance 13-5 and ordinance 13-6 is scheduled for October 16th, so the next council meeting. Thank you, Sandra. So that is our agenda for today. We'll move on to council calendar.
I want to point out a couple of events that are coming up on the calendar. This Saturday at the Riverwalk is going to be the second annual Oktoberfest. That's from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, the 12th, there's going to be the annual fire station open house, Station 45, from 10:00 to 2:00. Not on your calendar, and before you, there's an invitation to the police department swearing-in ceremony where the new deputy chief will be sworn in, along with, I believe, four other officers. And then also on December 16th, starting at 10 o'clock here in the Galleria, there'll be the fraud awareness fair that will be taking place. It's usually well-attended by a lot of our senior citizens in the city. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Carol, can I ask, on the calendar, a request for me, and we can address it later, but the paper calendar is great, and I kind of use it, but is it possible, because we have the, some of us have iPads, and we're all using smartphones now, that have calendar features, for some of these board meetings and the city-sponsored events, is to kind of get those sent out via Outlook invitation, so they're there and we don't, this is a step, sometimes I don't, they don't translate to the smartphone. It's just, it's just a question more. I know that's something that would be helpful. So thank you, though. City manager report?
Just briefly, Mayor Protem and council members, I want to thank the issues that were raised by many of you in regard to the Farm to Fork Week last week. Our staff responded, did a great job in terms of the tower bridge, traffic controls on our side of the river, as well as the Broderick event on Sunday. We were nimble, we were quick, and I heard a lot of kudos from the sponsors about our role there.
Yes. Thank you very much. Both events turned out really well and showed our city well. Thank you. City attorney report?
Thank you.
Staff direction from city council members? Anything? Future agenda item requests from council members? Seeing none, so we have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion in a second. I'll have a favor say aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor Protem, our Japanese visitors would like to take a picture with the council, so if you wouldn't mind sticking around for that, that'd be great.
Thank you. Yes, if the council member showed his mind.